I do need that.
Yeah, because we need a document.
That was adopted in the whole agenda. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the items listed that they already answered? That's why I did. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I made motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Yes, sorry. Do we get a vote? Just say aye. What?
We didn't say aye.
We didn't say aye.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Your show is still on the phone? She is. Okay, ready. Hi there.
Here we have a communications report. She's coming. Okay, she's. Thanks for you guys. Thank you. If you're any Quincy Jack's merch and you're a girl.
Where do you use me?
Uh, it's from you. It's from you dot com. Yeah. Very good.
Nick has a jar of them in his office.
I've got that jar today. I was thinking for my other hat that I wear in the community.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Something I have to put on.
Hi.
Are we good?
I think, I think we're good. You're, you're at a pretty good volume now that you're serving that area.
Hey, my name is Jessica Plankas and I am the communications coordinator with Quincy School District. And I am going to be giving an update on district communication. And I first want to bring up this quote because it says really influence my communication work over the last two years. It says that the two words information and communication are often used interchangeably, but they signify quite different things. Information is given out and communication is getting through. So over this report, I want to talk about how we are giving out information and then how we are communicating through. So first, what we do. We are consistently and safely sharing information with our, sharing information and telling stories to keep our community informed, engaged and proud of our schools. We equip staff with the necessary tools for effective and consistent communication with our families and staff, and we train them on how to utilize these tools. We also maintain the identity of Quincy School District by ensuring adherence to branding guidelines. And so why does this matter? Well, it matters because families in the community must be informed. They must be informed to be engaged and take pride in our schools and their children's education. And they also, students and families and the community also must feel authentically engaged, culturally accepted, and have a feel seen, safe seen and celebrated in, in our schools. And the presentation of the Quincy School District through visual, digital and written communication not only strengthens our connection with our community, but also promotes our values and our vision. And so how do we do this? How do we give information out and how do we communicate through? We do this through communication tools, training, establishing processes and building relationships. And over the next couple of slides, I'm gonna give a brief overview of these four bullet points, starting with our tools. So we utilize various communication tools and there's tons out there. But we developed, developed two criteria. We knew we needed tools for creating and tools for sharing. So our primary tool for creating is Canva and Canva is a graphic design platform for non-graphic design designers. And I will go a little bit into this in the next slide because it's, it's really important in our communicating through. And then we have our tools for sharing, which are digital and print communication tools. So what is Canva? So Canva is used to create graphics from newsletters to flyers and social media posts. Our key communicators in the district, which are like principals, secretaries and parent liaisons have been using Canva the last two years, but we just recently launched district wide in January, which means that all district staff have access to the branding kit. So they have access to the logos. They have access to our colors, to our fonts that they can use and incorporate into their communication. And now they have access to QST creative templates. So it's ready to use. All they need to do is drop in their information or drop in their logos and they're ready to go. And one of the cool things about Canva, it is easy to collaborate within the platform. Just like Office three six five where you're in a, in a like word document and you're sharing it out. Multiple people, multiple people can be editing. It's the same way with Canva. So if somebody is finishing up a flyer and maybe they need somebody to come in and translate, they can just do that on the page. So it really cuts back on, on that time. And I do want to give a little bit by the numbers on our communication tools. We'll start off with our social media. So our social media is more of the, one of the more widely and highly used communication platforms or communication tools. All of our schools have social media accounts, including most of our clubs and most of our athletic teams. And the district monitors and archives those accounts. Right now we are about 6,000 followers on Facebook for the district page and over seven, 1,700 for Instagram account. And we've shared information 270 times on our district account and 136 on our Instagram with 347 stories, which are just kind of 24 hour news items up on our Instagram account.
And just because that, just this year.
Just this year. It's from August 2023 to April 2024. And then I did include some numbers on Canva. So right now I think now we're around 140 plus active members on Canva. And those 138 active members have created over 600 designs on Canva with the district creating 332. And then we do subscribe to a mass communication platform, which is Remind. It's a text messaging platform. And we've sent over 800 plus announcements and that's like, including district and school announcements and not, it's not the day to day communication. It's not like the teacher to teacher communication because our teachers have access to this in our schools and then the district. And so they can send anything from classroom updates, pictures, reminders to get an assignment into students. It's really a neat platform to do that one-on-one communication and really getting through. We also have websites. So the district has a website and so do all of our schools. And really I see the website as being our catch-all kind of platform where we have all of our documents. We have like student handbooks on there. We have staff documents on there. It's kind of where all of the stuff we link on our social media pages or link out on Remind, this is where it kind of lives. But we also share news items on there as well as calendar items. And with that, we also have an app that syncs to our website that launched last year and that is like a centralized location for our news events and has some quick links. And we are.
Oops, I apologize.
Oh, no, you're.
Yeah, click happy.
We also have print communication and we're still using that, using print communication. I mean, we are moving more and more to digital communication, but print is still a good platform to get communication out. I mean, it's good to have something tangible to look at and read through. And so this year we even launched our resource guide for new and returning families, which is a 24-page booklet that has everything a newer returning family would need to know about the district, including our strategic plan, school contact information, you know, information about food service and transportation, as well as some of our district policies. And this document was, or this booklet was mailed out to all Quincy residents in August of last year. And then we printed extra for our schools to have when students enroll and they can have a, an issue. And then, and one of more popular print communication pieces is our calendar. So it has all that important information or all that important events, but it, it is also designed around the theme. And then this year's theme was Elevating Student Voice, where we included quotes from students across the district about their school experience. And then we took some awesome photos with the help of our tech team. And so this was mailed out to all Quincy residents and then ours, we still have a few copies here in the district to give out to families if they come. And so now that we have those tools, we knew that we needed to provide the training. So we do this several different ways. We can do it through webinars, in-person group trainings. I prefer the one-on-one training because you really get to connect with the other person and build that relationship and trust. We have a resource database where all those recordings go, as well as step-by-step instructions on like how to use Remind or some of our social media guides as well. And then on-demand help, you know, staff and families come to me for help. And then new this year, we partnered with teaching and learning department to offer clock hours for Canva. So it's a nice little incentive for people to hop in and look at Canva and still get some clock hours. And so we have our tools and our training. Now we worked, we're working on establishing processes. So one of the processes is a multi-channel communication, which is where our schools and the district aim to make that same information available across all platforms. We knew that, we know that our families are busy and they're not just getting communication from their school or from the district. They're getting communication maybe from the job or from friends and families. So we want to make sure that the information they need is available across various platforms. So we'll push it out through social media, push it up to Remind, put it on our website. So just in case maybe they don't see the Remind text while they're scrolling on social media, maybe they'll see the flyer that was sent through Remind. Or they can look on our website and it'll be right there as well. And then we do have a four-step communication process for our district, for the district, for our non-emergency need-to-know district-wide information, which is printed, promoted digitally, communicated in real time and translated. And one example would be the last year when Home Room was launched. We did all four things. We sent it out via Remind. We sent it home with the, well, actually I think we did conferences and we handed families a flyer. And then it was on our app and it was on our website. And then another way we are communicating through is by building relationships with our families. And one of the ways is by eliminating that language barrier in communication. The last two years, we've been working to make everything that the district sends out English and Spanish. Previously it was only like that, those important documents that were translated. So now anything from celebrations, from photo captions, anything we reshare on social media, the captions are all translated in English and Spanish, which has increased our engagement and has created a sense of belonging and value because we're doing that. And then we're also focusing on consistent communication. So our families know to expect communication from their teacher, from their school and from the district. And oftentimes it's from the same person at every school. So they know that that information is coming from a trusted source and they're building that relationship with them. And so not, not only are we building relationships with our families, we are building relationships with our students. We are here because of our students and they want to be heard and we want to hear from them. So we are utilizing different methods to incorporate student voice into our communication. We are doing it through social media campaigns. We are selling, we are sharing their celebrations. We did a Hispanic Heritage Month campaign last fall where we shared information on our Metta Club and then obviously our calendar where we featured our students. And then we're doing it through print publication as well. Again, in their calendar and then in newsletters, we have a quarterly newsletter called The Communicator where we highlight what we profile is Quincy grad. So we, we have a story on them and then what they're doing now that they have graduated high school. Next step, so looking towards the remainder of the year and the next year, we will be having a communication table at the family festival this Saturday, where I'll be there to answer any questions and help families with any of the platforms that we use. And it's a good way to build relationships there and connect with families and put a face behind, you know, an app or a text and they know who's sending that out. We are also going to be updating our resource guide for new returning families and that will be sent out again in August. And we're working on our wall calendar. We do have a theme. It's Building Foundations for Bright Futures, where we are going to, every month spotlight how the Quincy School District is supporting and equipping our students for success for the future. So we'll have maybe, we'll have, it's really being outlined right now, but we'll have a, a page on maybe our, our academics, our athletics. We'll have a page on our pathways and beyond event that happened this, this winter. And then we'll also be doing a communication survey in the fall now that we've established our processes and have our tools. We want to know, we want to hear from families on how we're doing and what we can do to, to move. That's all. And then the handout that I gave you, that is what I will be handing out at the family festival. Any questions, comments?
I mean, because of the calendar, I, I don't know how many times I got written this.
Yeah, I heard that there was parents who were like ripping out the pages and putting them all and stuff. So that, that makes feel, makes feel good. Yeah.
That's definitely my favorite part.
Very popular. Yeah. People are very passionate about it and they don't get it. Yeah.
I mean, the, the progress that you have made for our district and how long have you been in this role?
Uh, this is my second year.
But you've actually been doing a lot.
Yeah, hard time for a few years. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just in the last seven, eight years, it's just night and day. It's just really remarkable. It was an area that our district was really in need of increasing communication with parents. And so, you know, it kind of, you've really, you really sponsored the work that has been done and you've done a remarkable job. Yeah, just incredible. Thanks for your work.
I, I think my, my dad didn't like, he wouldn't pay much attention to the Remind messages until they translated to him in Spanish.
Oh, good.
And so now I'm like, how do you know that?
Oh, that's, that makes me so happy to hear. Thank you. Yeah. Welcome. Yeah, it's all for you guys. It's for the students. So.
It is, but it's also nice, you know, the students they love. I, I don't know how much they love it because we have a teacher. So remember, parents, your student has a quiz tomorrow. They're upstairs playing video games.
I feel like going off what you said is like, I think the district has evolved in so many ways and especially with the communication. Again, like parents not know everything. Really helpful and like to everyone for it to know. And I think that's what, I don't know. Yeah, thank you.
Just, just go for it. I know I was speaking to you before.
Yeah, I love it.
Do you mind just sharing with the board like your teacher appreciation campaign is?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We are just rolling that out. So if you see it on social media or on our website, we would like, you know, former students, current students or parents of students to fill out a form online and say, and just show appreciation for our school. And then we'll put all that together in a social media post and on our website, we'll send it out. I think it's really nice that our teachers be recognized for all the work that they do. You know, and it could be, you know, teachers in the past, not current teachers. So yeah, I really encourage you guys, if you see that, to submit that.
When is, when is the teacher?
Uh, it is, I think, May 11th through 15th.
What, how's the response to this?
Um, I picked it out. So we have some high school, mostly high school students have been filling it out. So great. We have some adults fill it out, but I mean, it's been, Kristen over at the high school has helped, you know, share the, spread the word.
Spread it better than.
Okay. Yeah, we shared, but it was really busy. So I think it might've gotten lost, but I'm gonna keep sharing it as we get closer to the deadline. Just people like to do things last minute. So.
Is it on the socials right?
Yeah, it is on socials. It's just says like to my teacher. That's the post. Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
I went for stuff.
All right. Good evening. It is truly my honor to be introducing two of our outstanding teacher leaders who have had a great impact on our community and our students and our entire district. I'd like to first introduce Kylie Youngren. She is our VAPA Visual and Performing Arts Teacher Leader. So she is the lead of all of our visual and performing arts teachers who collaborate at least monthly, sometimes quite a bit more. So last night she helped lead an incredible event, the Arts Night. And wouldn't have happened without her leadership. So really want to thank her. She's gonna actually be leading the presentation tonight. She's also our Director of Choirs. So you, you know, any kind of choir that you hear in our district, very well decorated choir, choir. She leads. In addition, Devin, Devin Chandler will be here as well. And she'll be talking about band and the incredible work that she's done. She's our Director of Bands and really expanding that program as well. So we're excited to have the chance to chat tonight.
Hello. Thank you for the very kind and warm introduction, Alison. Yes, VAPA is the Visual and Performing Arts. So when you hear that acronym, VAPA, VAPA sounds like something else. Right. The ad, we're gonna work on our dictionary with that one, VAPA.
Yeah.
Okay, next slide. So we're gonna talk about what all of the programs and courses are that are included in our VAPA program. But before I get to that, our national and state standards for all of our visual and performing arts fall under these four, and that is creating, performing, responding and connecting. And even though we are like content areas within the arts, music is very different than graphic art is very different than theater. And so there are these common themes and common standards, but they manifest themselves differently within each discipline. However, as a team this year, we decided to focus on a common standard and that was the theme of connecting. So during our PLCs, when we're able to have those vertical collaborations, we're discussing how we're incorporating the standard of connecting throughout the different disciplines. And we tried to highlight that at District Arts Night last night as well, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. So the programs and courses that are included in the visual and performing arts look different at each school level. But at elementary, we have all transitional kindergarten through fifth grade have weekly music class and then arts through the STEAM enrichment program. At the middle school, every sixth grader has the opportunity to take a music class. And so every sixth grade student is either choir, band or general music. General music looks like a piano, guitar and music appreciation course. And then once we get to seventh and eighth grade, music courses become elective as well as art courses. And so our VAPA programs at the seventh and eighth grade level are choir and band and then general arts, drawing and painting and sculpture. The high school visual and performing arts courses are a little more expansive. They are still elective. However, students need at least two years of arts credit in order to graduate. And so on the music side, that looks like our band and percussion ensemble. We have three choirs this year. We have a beginning guitar class as well as a piano class. And sometimes we alternate with an advanced piano course as well for students who are looking for a more accelerated piano or have already taken the course. Through arts, we have art one and two, mixed media, ceramics, one and two. And then theater, we have our drama, one and two classes. I want to point out that these are all of our curricular programs. There's a lot of extracurricular programs that happen through our VAPA program as well at all levels, including our elementary jackrabbit choirs. We have at the middle school level, oh, they just started art club, which is coming up in a little bit on a celebration slide. And then at the high school level, I think the most notable is the high school theater program because all of the productions that you see in that public output is really through the club portion of theater. So 100% of our students at that elementary level are served through our VAPA programs. About 75% of our middle school students and 71% of our high school students that get to be involved in the visual and performing arts. So notable events, last night we had District Arts Night. This is actually the fifth year. It feels weird to say annual because we took two years off because of COVID, but I think we're far enough past it. We can get back to saying annual. I have been in the district for seven years now and my PLC at the time, which was smaller, just because it was before redistricting and rebounding and everything. We decided after seeing the wonderful STEAM nights, the CTE showcase, that we didn't really have something like that for the arts besides our concerts and productions, which are also those things, but something where we all collaborated together. And we saw a need for that in our district to highlight it all in one place and in one space. And so we decided to launch District Arts Night. We actually had a mountain view the first year and used the little stage in there and they had the brand new gym. And I remember we laid out mats before, we were concerned about the instrument, instrumentalist. I think there was some sort of rhythm stick thing and then like instruments on the ground. And then we took off the mats and then the folk lodeco dancers came in and sucked yellow all over everything. We were like, oh, that's what we should have had the mats jump for. On this new gym floor, but it was a really beautiful event and that is why it is now annual. We decided this is something we need to keep. And so last night we were at the high school. I didn't have a chance yet to count up how many people came through our doors, but it was full throughout the evening and both the performance area as well as the main commons. If you haven't attended, hopefully this is like yourself for next year. So you can be a part of the sixth annual District Arts Night. But we had performances from every school except for George. We had artwork from every single school. And so everyone was represented in some way, every visual and performing arts program from our STEAM at the elementary level, our middle school and high school arts classes. We even had learning labs with our guitar and piano students. So our non-performing music classes got to be involved. And then of course the performing classes in the theater. At the district, we put on almost 20 concerts throughout the year from elementary through high school level. We have two full-scale theatrical productions and then many additional events. Some of these are required as curricular parts of classes and there are some things that are optional, but a lot of our students choose to engage in, which helps them connect to school and stay connected to our community. So some celebrations and successes. This at the top is actually a photo from last night's District Arts Night. And I would be remiss to mention, or to forget to mention that Dr. Nick Bergman was chosen as our 2023, 2024 Friend of the Arts. And we have to come back to accept that award.
I've been there. I was there.
I know. I had already seen you, which is why I went on stage so ready to give you the award. I'm glad to see you. We were so out there. But this is an award that we designed, once again, that first year when Carol Carlton was retiring from the Director of Teaching and Learning position. And she, I would say is one of the people responsible for choir coming back to Quincy and helping facilitate that transition that made this position available to me. And so we. that transition that made this position available to me. And so um, we as a team voted her our first Friend of the Arts that someone in distinguished leadership and supportive arts education in our school district. And Dr. Bergman exemplifies that in so many ways. And we appreciate how he's led our district through so much change and even just the last couple of years, but um especially supported the arts through that all and made sure that we as arts teachers feel supported and valued and that helps our kids also feel that value and support as well. So.
You guys are very easy to support. So I will say last night, it was just, this picture was just beautiful. This, the kids all performing together. K twelve and the pack was full, standing room only with all their parents there supporting ours. It was just such a beautiful moment and just such a testament to the work that that, you know, you all, you both are leading uh K twelve. It really is reverberating up in our system and it just was such a wonderful showcase. I mean, it was emotional just watching everybody come together um in celebration music and arts last night. It was really outstanding.
Thank you. Um, some successes of our program, we're gonna do a few quick spotlights. Um, our high school band, that's actually our big spotlight that we're gonna hear from in a few minutes here. Um, but grown to over sixty students, uh they've acquired brand new band uniforms. And uh our music chapter of the booster program, uh we, they've added more regional performances and uh I think, I mean, I don't wanna like, first what you're gonna say later. Did you put it in all caps? Should I say? Over fifty events a year. Um, but there's, there's a lot going on. Like it's a student part-time job to be in our band program, but something they took on with pride as you can see. Um, our elementary music program, uh Sydney Johnson, who is our um elementary music lead, has done some really great work about collaborating amongst the elementary teachers to get Jack Rabbit Choirs back. So I believe they're through fifth grade choir, uh the elementaries, and then they're um collaborating together for combined performances. So uh, last year they performed at the Quincy Public Market at Christmas, but this year they've also gone to the Senior Center. And so doing some outreach in the community and getting hip hop their singing. They also just got back from the Yakima Symphony Field Trip. And then the last couple of years, we've had Seattle Opera come and visit. Our high school theater program uh was nominated in every category of the Apple Awards. So this is something that the Numerica Pack puts on. And um regional area high schools, um Kashmir, Ca- Eastmont, uh Shalane, Wenatchee, I think, and us. I think there might be one more in there that I missed. Um, but the five schools that are a part of it, but every category, including um best overall musical, best overall play, and then some of our students uh receiving individual nominations as well. Um, you are all welcome to come attend that, by the way, on May sixteenth at the Numerica Pack. Tickets are available for sale and our students will be performing. So seniors and those who are nominated uh from all across the region will perform an opening number and a closing number. And my husband's also music directing, so like you're still supporting Quincy people, not just our kids, but like all of us by going to. Um, um, they're also running their uh first theater camp for ages eight to thirteen uh in an effort to build the program and also fundraise for the program. I think what's really special about this is that Haley Weber is building some really great student leadership by having the high school students manage and run the theater camp. So they are in training right now so that they can be the acting teachers to uh the kids once that starts. So uh uh you can go see Twinderella at the end of that camp, like mid-May. Our middle school choir, um, they've been performing in the community more this year. They sing the National Anthem at a few sporting events. Um, and they are currently fundraising for some new risers, I hear. Yes. Um, so uh they're on track to get that done. Our high school and middle school art, uh students at high school continue to be showcased in the regional high school art show. And then um uh Leslie Pugh, it's her first year, right, at the, back at the middle school. So uh she was able, I think in a single afternoon, to get uh donations that uh awarded six thousand dollars to the QMS Art Department to help them get a new kiln so that they continue, can continue to provide uh ceramics for the kids at the middle school level. They also uh just reinvigorated the QMS Art Club, so we have that now at the middle school. Then our high school choir, um, we had our first Disney performance tour last year. We're planning on doing more travel things. We're going to Seattle Opera next Thursday uh with our uh fundraising efforts through our portion of the Booster Club. Um, we've done a lot and those kids are all about to graduate, and so the money needs to get spent on them since they helped raise it. So we're taking a charter bus to Seattle. We have fifty uh tickets to Seattle Opera's uh dress rehearsal production of Art of Seville. And so we'll be able to attend the opera. We're gonna dress to the nines for it and enjoy that. We also have um one student soloist, Ally Manley, uh and a small quartet. Well, I mean, a quartet is only four, so however you wanna think about that. But a quartet as well as uh our travel singers from Spectrum Choir headed to state uh on Friday and Saturday this weekend. And so we are competing against Eastmont Wenatchee for those spots. We're, we're not in a one A or two A category for that. So headed to state on Friday and Saturday. And thank you to the administrators who are giving us um a sage, uh state send-off. We appreciate that. The kids are looking forward to running through. The last time we did that, we got a lot of good luck at your game, so. Hey, um, I believe next, uh huh, we're going to highlight our band program. Uh, so Devin Chandler took over the program two years ago. And if, I would be surprised if you have not heard uh her name or what she has been doing, because the growth in the program has been really incredible, not just in quantity but in quality. So um, I feel honored to get to share this space with her. And not just a colleague, but a good friend.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna say thank you to my coworkers that I see the most of. Uh, Kylie Anne, Shayna Stuckey, the middle school choir director. Um, as much as I'm the Director of Bands for the district at middle and the high school, I sure couldn't do it without either of them. Um, it definitely is like our own little village, and so very appreciative, appreciative of them both. Um, I have a lot of words up here, but there's a lot of good things to talk about at both programs. Um, so Devin Chandler, I teach band at middle school and high school level. Um, I start my mornings at the high school and then go over to the middle school in the afternoons. Um, and it's, it's really fun working with both uh levels. Uh, middle school band this year, we did have a large influx of students. Um, we have about ninety students in sixth grade band. Uh, we had about ninety to a hundred last year as well, and it ebbs and flows a bit. Um, this year, uh, we went to fifty students in the seventh and eighth grade advanced band. The cap size is forty, but I was given the go-ahead. Thank you for that, for up to fifty students in the class, and we have had fifty students in the class all year, which is incredible. Uh, last year, uh, my first year in this position, we just had twenty, we had twenty-three students in the seventh and eighth grade band, and so it's doubled in the last year. Um, looking at the numbers in that, eleven students are in eighth grade and thirty-nine are in seventh grade. So that would mean we have a fifty percent retention rate from sixth to seventh grade band. Um, and there, it could be, it could be more. That was the cap size for the class. Um, but uh fifty percent is a great retention rate to have. I hope to have that again this year. Uh, retention rate of fifty percent going forward would mean eighty to a hundred plus students in Quincy High School Band in a couple of years, which is super exciting. Um, in this discipline, um, a large high school band is about ten percent of the population. Um, so that we would be on par with that. However, there are um some other schools in the area that are three A, four A high school that have um about the numbers that we have. So this is, this is amazing. Kids are happy to be in our music programs, are happy to be in band and share music with so many, so many people at so many different events. Um, it's a really amazing thing and fun to plant the seed with the seventh and eighth graders. Um, they're so excited. Uh, I, another thank you to Shayna. Um, I'm not at the high school, at the middle school in the morning. She is. And she has students from seventh, eighth grade band at Jack Rabbit Support in her classroom. And the days that I am in there, cause it's my prep, there's like thirty kids playing Louie Louie in her classroom. And she's just hanging out, listening to them. So they're so excited. They are so, so excited. And that's you know, why I'm here. That's what I love to see, the kids get this appreciation and love for music that they can have for their whole life. Um, we did receive a six thousand dollar grant this year from Music Matters All, All Northwest. Um, that's from Washington Music Educator Association. Um, this funded speaker system, music stands, instruments, sheet music tuners, and instrument repairs, all those things that come with growing numbers, growing pains. So kind of catching up on some of the maintenance in the uh band room at the middle school. Um, some events and highlights for this group. We went to do um a concert at the Numerica Pack in Wenatchee. We got to see a house jazz band from uh the museum, uh National Jazz Museum in Harlem, which was super awesome. Um, December and March concert successes. We did perform at an award assembly um at Quincy Middle School in, when was that? Oh, in December. And that was amazing. Um, we had the fifty-person band perform for the whole school. And it was so well-received and supported and admired by many other students who are in those music programs. And they really enjoyed it and kind of caught their attention and asked like, Kate, how can I be in this in the future? What can I do to be involved as well? So that was really awesome. Um, we went to Large Group in March, X M plus reading. We have Junior Apple Blossom Parade this weekend on Saturday. And we're like smacked up in the middle of the parade. So if you're in Wenatchee this weekend, it would be great to support our group. Um, and our end of the year concert coming up, May thirtieth. So wonderful things happening at the middle school band program. Um, also twenty plus instruments were donated this year to Quincy Middle School and the high school, um, thanks to staff, community, family members and Jessica and her wordsmithing for a social media post that went viral, just so you know. There's like a hundred shares on that. Uh, had a lot of instruments that people were like, hey, I have a clarinet that my kid played. Um, you can, it's on my doorstep. You can pick it up. So that was wonderful to see. Um, community members, families uh come together and support our program. Um, at the high school, um, large influx of students this year as well. It is the next slide. Um, again, a lot of words, but there are so many good things to talk about that I, I have to nod to all of them. Um, not all caps, just in all bold, over fifty performances uh throughout the school year. Um, there, there're big and small. There're pep rallies in the morning, um, there're basketball games, there are concerts, there're large group festivals, there're Wenatchee Wild Games. Um, four parades throughout the year. They, we are busy. Uh, the best thing about it is although we're busy, the attitude and dedication from students is incredible. Um, they are not only in band. These students are also in athletics. They're also um highly into their academics. Uh, they have families. Uh, they are, they're busy. And they are still at these events with a smile on their face, knowing that they have the gift of sharing music with hundreds and hundreds of people. So uh throughout these performances this year, um, we have, we have band camp at the end of summer. F-CAD Parade, Autumn Leaf Parade in Love Worth, football games and debut of new uniforms. Woo-hoo, so exciting. Um, field trip to watch a marching band festival, uh basketball games, regional solo ensemble contest. The top scorers for the clarinet category were both Quincy High School students and they were first alternate for uh woodwind duet, which is amazing. Uh, Wenatchee Wild Game fundraisers, uh Large Group Festival. We just went saw jazz concert at Central, so we gotta do a little bit of a college tour as well. Um, and parades are coming up, Silverwood, graduation, elementary, middle school tour. Um, really fun things happening. We did double band the high school as well. We had thirty-one last year and we were up to sixty-one this year with preliminary numbers. It looks like about eighty students at Quincy High School Band next year. Um, also fortunate to have had a new course added, the percussion ensemble and QHS Drumline, which is um, has been well received. Uh, I've been getting emails like, hey, can the drum line play at this? Not the band. No, the man gets requested, but uh that's just, it's been really fun. Um. Yeah, it is. It is so cool. We just went to Monument on Friday and all, they all went in with their sunglasses and all the kids were like, I just met a celebrity. Yeah, just really, really fun. Um, with that growth happening, um, hope to see it continue. It sounds like it'll continue next year and here in the future. So really great things happening. Uh, this would not be happening without um the district level support that we have for our program overall. So thank you all very much.
You know, you did mention Apple Blossom coming up, right?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Really excited about that.
Junior Apple Blossom is this weekend and then the following weekend, uh, May fourth is Grand Apple Blossom. And we are at the very beginning of the parade this year, um, which is great because it's our first time wearing uniforms. I do think it's important to say that last year, there's about twenty bands in this, and it's really like a state competition, right? It spans from all over the state. We were the only high school without band uniforms. And uh, we got them this year. Thank you, district level, Dr. Bergman especially. Appreciate that. Um, we're at the beginning of the parade this year. I did complain a little bit because we were last, last year. Um, it's uh Eastmont Wenatchee, Quincy, so we're right at the front. So um, if you are all able to or interested in going to the Apple Blossom Parade, we will be right there at the front this year. Great, you're gonna be up front.
So what's next for our programs at the elementary level? We're looking at more collaborative performances for the Jack Rabbit Choirs. Uh, they've also done some great work on quarterly standardized tests across the district. So that happened in their PLC, making sure there's alignment, because it doesn't matter what child or what elementary a child goes to, they should still be receiving the same music education and art education. Uh, at the middle school level, we're looking at music and art curriculum materials and equipment. As Devin has mentioned, like this band program is best seen at the seams, and with that comes the needs of like, if you have more kids, you need more instruments, more material. We uh, we're looking at uh art curriculum the middle school and high school level. As mentioned earlier, the new QMS risers and uh the addition of a middle school music club. At the high school, just continued support for VAPA courses and registration and academic planning. Um, we're glad that our students have so many pathways that are offered and um we feel sometimes it maybe pushes kids out, like I only need two years of arts. It's like, well, imagine what, what you could do with four, you know? So uh, just having that kind of mindset from all levels uh is, is the direction that we would like to head. Uh, continued support for instrument maintenance and uh once again, that curriculum search at this uh for secondary art. Uh, also just looking ahead as a district, once again, we've, we've always felt at the district level, this very strong support for the work um that we are doing. And uh, I heard it once in a workshop session talking about elementary music and it's like, no, that's essential music. And, and we've seen um that value placed here, and that's why we're able to do our jobs. And so just that reframing of not, not elementary, not extra, right? Sometimes we're viewed as extracurricular, even though we're full-time teachers in the building. Um, it's, it's not extra, it's essential. And when we think about our strategic plan and creating a culture of safety, both in belonging, that that is the bread and butter of what we're doing in this, in our programs. And Devin and I were talking, we're like, it feels like a highlight reel. Here's all the things we do, blah, 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 blah. But if you could just see and hear the kids and not to like nudge you, but maybe say something in a bit here, but like, like how they experience the program and how that makes them feel as a student in that space and how that makes them feel connected to our school and community, like that is at the heart of what we're doing. Like we are teaching humans through music and we feel lucky to have an avenue that makes it so easy to do that. Um, but yes, like if, if we're looking for that checkbox on the strategic plan, like please come spend a day with us. We would love, love, love to have you. Um, I believe that is our last one, but thank you so much for having us and like letting us share about the arts and taking time on board to do that. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. No, I just think we can't pass up any art. Part of everybody's, have their own little niche. And really, rest.
Yeah, well, I can dance, too. Great, but I got still Miss Ror and Miss Chandler. And even though like I don't wanna compare, but like the program has grown a lot in ways. Mr. Silverman, at his time, Miss Ror and Miss Chandler, like breaking apart. So I'm like a ten-year-old now, too. I mean, I graduate, I'm gonna be eighteen, I go with this program. It's very fascinating and being able to be with peers. I've been friends with everyone I've been with. I've seen you move across the country. I'm so proud to say, it's something that we can all share it and music is a important thing. I'm a psychology professor now and like there's a culture behind music and the way it makes your brain is like powerful and so I mean, I think my brothers too love classic. My brother's in band. Um, my smallest one, Miss Cook, he loves it. And so in the VAPA I'm actually growing to, I've had my time at my parents'. And it's just like this form of you want to be other than one, the way to share that love to others. Since I think they do this, they do a job with that. And remember, I thought we all have talent. Every time I say I can't sing, I can't do this, they're like, it's not yet. And that's it to me, and I think they are really grateful for what it feels to be part of the community.
I didn't mean to push it that hard, did I? The growth in the program is just amazing. That's incredible. I, I, my kids were in high school when there was a decline in the band and until you came in for theater and choir. And so to see it have grown that much is just remarkable. We're just offering so much more to not only our students, but our families too, um, to be able to come in and watch their kids um perform and perform well at a level.
Um, to be able to come in and watch their kids, um, perform and perform well at a level, it's really important. Thank you all for your work. Well, thank you for sharing your children with us because it is really neat to see like the legacy that they provide. Because especially like Paige and the shows, people like, oh, she was Audrey. Oh, I remember loving that play and like Ally Manley, who's graduating now, got nominated for multiple Apple Awards. Seeing Little Shop when she was in seventh grade, she said that was such like an impactful experience for her, like she had done shows and then she was like, no, now I love this and I want to keep doing this. From seeing like the older kids get to do it. And so to see that like leadership and gall, like continue to be passed down through the years is really special too.
Kelly, was, was your first year in two thousand seventeen?
The, yes, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
Part of that, all of our, I would say most of our arts was on life support. It's all Pally team. It really was the, what turned the tide, uh, for the arts and all you done and it really, it floats all boats. Everybody wins. We have solid arts, whether it's at, uh, pep assembly or the band comes marching in and, uh, or singing the national anthem, everybody wins. We have this robust, uh, art programs and it really started with you and you know, having colleagues, I love the way you support each other. That's one thing I really appreciate about you guys is you're not competing programs. You're both, you are each other's biggest cheerleaders and we have that too. That also helps all arts thrive. So with that connected, how connected you are and what you collaborate, that is just, I think you'll continue to, to thrive and to expand. Just the way you guys cheer each other too, I think is pretty amazing.
Pretty great cheering a wall, except for we have percussion ensemble when she has choir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to leave mine again, I probably don't need to say much more about that, but I, it was just a wonderful experience. And there's multiple other opportunities. I'll make sure the board's aware, uh, to come and see our students perform, whether it's Apple Blossom or the, any of your concerts that are coming up that are amazing. And I think that's really cool to see. You know, kind of reading your letters off at your end of year concert, your spring concert?
Yes.
Yeah, it's really cool to see letters and seniors and just the, just the motion behind their experience in choir and same with them in band. It's really neat. So it's, uh, I'll make sure you have all that too. Um, so that night was just amazing. The art even is just what our, uh, what lessons done at the middle school, Cassie's doing at high school. It's just really, it was really inspiring, uh, for me to attend that night. So. Uh, from Alabama graduate, we met, uh, almost two weeks ago to start developing, you know, what we want, where this core competencies that we want students to graduate. If you know graduating high school, this is not enough. They have to leave with, with quite a few secondary skills, um, that, that and a certain, again, beyond a high school graduate and how do we get them ready for that? So this is a K twelve, uh, project, Dana. Thank you for representing for Dana was there. Um, once we get further along, we'll make sure that we bring it to the board, we'll give back inputs, uh, to help us make sure that we're on the right track with that too. So that will be probably within the next several weeks. We'll bring that to you guys for your input as part of our work session as well. Uh, facilities meeting, we had our third facilities meeting. Thank you, Shannon, for coming. Um, we hope to have a recommendation to the board for your input and at least maybe by the earliest at the end of June, maybe in July. Um, you know, we're really batting some ideas around, um, some long-term projects, such as the middle school amount view and, and the progression of those. Um, and then Shannon, maybe board leadership, if I just anything add to that, but that's kind of what we're wrestling with right now. Um, staff director interviews are tomorrow. That's a two-day, uh, process. It comes in two weeks. But no, I think we have some, some qualified candidates, uh, three. Now we have one out. So we have three candidates that we're interviewing. It's a full-day process starting at nine. It will conclude around six thirty. The board's welcome to attend either the community input or the staff input and meet each, each one of the candidates and give feedback to me on, on what you, you notice and what you hear. Uh, so you're more than welcome to attend the community or, or staff. Staff starts at three thirty, community starts at five. Uh, and the second day is a, is a small group interview with our cabinet that will make a selection of recommendation to board after that. Um, and just a few things, uh, this Saturday, we have our My Friend Family Festival. There is a district table, forty-four members, one of the ten, and, um, uh, we have a flyer that you can hand out if you like. We, Jessica loves stickers. It's right next to Jessica. Board is coming out, so it starts.
I will be wearing multiple.
Okay, great. Yeah, just, it's very casual. It's, it's, there's no horse stock. So anytime you show up, it's perfect. Tomorrow is administrative appre- assistant appreciation month. Just thank you to all of our amazing administrative assistants that we have out in the district and all that they do to balance all the plates and do all the things. We have some amazing admin assistants. So tomorrow's our day. So just publicly thank you very much for our admin assistants. Back to Jacks, May third coming up, interview the updates. Uh, I put a link if you'd like to buy tickets to that event. May third, it starts at five thirty. It says till nine, but I don't think it will go till nine. I don't know if I can make it, but, uh, that's what they say. It's gonna be on the line. Um, and then, uh, May seventh, uh, at five o'clock, the employee, uh, recognition at Q H S Commons. It's a really great event. Uh, it is on a Tuesday, uh, you can make it, that'd be great before you be there. We posted this gathering of the board. Uh, and you can all hand out certificates and awards and congratulate our employees of the year.
And retirees.
And retire, no, one retire.
I think.
And a lot of retirees this year, but we have some awesome employees to recognize. So that's all I have.
Anybody have questions? Student board.
Okay. Uh, we don't have a lot, um, but, uh, state testing has just started. Um, I think any freshman sophomores. Um, so any freshmen, there should be creepy little goody bags, but like I said, it was a vanilla, uh, stress, little stress star. Uh, man's gum and that little motivational, um, just to encourage a student, um, we'll be hanging those out as testing goes on. Um, promised on the corner. It's May eighteenth. Uh, we had a very creative way of announcing it.
It was really cool.
Yeah. We enjoyed it, um, and we, with the help of the seniors, helped put together, because they're not on the graduation year, which is twenty-four, we made it to the fourth year. And it was moving around, seeing what we do with it. Um, yeah.
Is that in high school this year?
Yeah.
Look, it's so nice last year. I'm glad you guys were able to get there this year.
Yeah, I think, uh, last year, last year's was a good high school, whatever. But I think overall, last year's enjoyed it. We like, do what we could, the comments, we put a little very light. And so this year, we've been stepping it up. We've got all that creation, like it's gonna be, it's gonna be really good. You're not gonna feel like you're in a high school. I really liked it last year. It was really pretty and I loved it. I guess pretty much it.
Or fingers. Rachel, yeah. Where is that school? You know, uh, I have to. Twelve of them, so I have to look up.
Middle school is next. Yes, it's at the middle school and it is next to the aquatic center. There. I think so. I'll make sure you have directions. I'll put it, I'll, I'll make sure that you guys find the place. Am I right? Yes.
First reading and adoption policy. We have revision.
Uh, it's just a, a first reading, so if there's any question, I don't, um, Dana, did you have some questions to like that? Are you there?
Dana?
Yes, I'm here. Um, my throat is just not great. I don't know if you could just go based off my email. And help me out. Uh, I did fully write down my comments.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, so one of the comments was around a, setting a meal charge policy in the event that we charge meals. We don't charge meals here in the district. We don't, it's, it's free lunch for everyone in the school district. So there's, there's no need, um, but that was, uh, well pointed out. And then the second comment was around, uh, recess at middle school. Uh, they do offer a full recess for kiddos. Do you go outside? I know the majority of them do, but they still have some students that will stay inside. So I just need to look at that a little bit more, Dana. About what Scott, I guess, you know, you, I'll talk to you after this about, uh, what are the requirements, but I know a lot of them do go outside. I know specifically my son was disappointed that, uh, there's no recess at high school. I already got this one earlier. He was fully convinced because he plays, I think the way he talks about it's NFL level football every night.
Probably very excited you talk that.
Those, that's all I have. And I gave more information about recess piece.
And then there was one of this, yeah. My, uh, that's bad. I thought you guys were so bad. The out of endorsement, did you?
Oh, that was, yeah, that was in the, um, that was only sent down. I'm happy to go back to that. So, I, there'll be several in the district that will, will have to take to the board and ask a title one, um, requirement. So if a teacher is teaching out of endorsement, we run a report called an educator equity report. So it, it filters all of our teachers, all their endorsements, and if there is a teacher out of endorsement, this particular teacher, uh, was out of endorsement, he's getting, he's working on his program, uh, to become a certified special education teacher. So there'll be, I think, we run another, usually it's around five teachers, but he is in his program, working towards his, his, um, uh, certificate. I think he'll be done next couple of years, uh, but he does, he's under the direct supervision of one of our special education teachers, um, to help him to make sure that he is, that we are in compliance. Um, and then I don't know this support in addition to that, that, for that is, that explains out. It's a function of title one when we have a teacher that is not have the adequate endorsement.
In, in most cases, they're working towards that.
Yes.
They're almost there, but working towards that.
Do you have anything more, Dana?
Oh, that's it.
I know. Do we have to vote?
No, no, just through it.
So we don't have one condition, but we don't have new business.
Works.
We do have a work section. So everybody is.
Thank you.
Or where you have.
We'll feature you. We'll do dinner next week. Yeah, that's true. That's true too.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy how the difference of a teacher, you know?
Oh.
And, and what it can make.
And the enthusiasm.
Yeah, yeah. It, it is incredible. Actually, um, Caitlin is, she's gonna be in the middle school next year, so she's been debating whether to do choir or band and just keeps going back and forth, back and forth.
Did she try both or no?
I think she's, she's gotta pick just one, but I was like, I have my clarinet from, from your, um, your cousin, Sydney, my girlfriend. So if you want to, then I've got the perfect instrument. Otherwise it's gonna, it's gonna get donated to someone, but it's.
I see it was so into drum, drumming and like I was so excited about it and.
Just remind me, I gotta turn this, can you be my, my, my reminder?
You interest in activities?
I like how active they are, they count. Then like, you know, like right away with coming up.
Well, that's good.
And they can put up to eight.
So maybe you're about graduation. Who's gonna participate in that graduation ceremony?
I should talk about that and that should be on in May. Yeah, I remember now from like driving videos. I should be touched about.
About fishing? Probably sounds about right.
Cause we drove out by the. I'll put that on my list in next minute.
And since.
No, maybe I did meet you.
Probably down towards that end, cause maybe when we went down the monument. Have you made it out there to the lake?
But you shared. Actually, fish or they don't know.
Actually, Josh, my brother just went out to. Day on cop in last weekend. I guess they pass were biting on there.
Yeah, we went to last. Like two weekends ago then. The boy just went like seven weeks. The sixth grade would be, we had been at like nine.
Really?
Yeah, and then. Over too soon.
So should we start our conversation? So really for this. Um, work session is this. You know, you know, I was kind of hoping to lean on you a little.
Yeah.
To go over the. The procedure. And this procedure was updated last year. And you know, see and the alley at the time. There's our other student board rep. They went to Losa, they talked to other students and then you know, that's he kept in contact with those other students and hearing about, you know, what do you do? What are your procedures like? How do? Or how do you engage in student? Uh, engage your student board reps? And then they came back and. And had five. Kind of tore apart, so which was really great. So I really, I wanted to keep this work session. Kind of an open dialogue between the board and the students. Um, about how we can best work together, how we can support one another um. For you on leave, they had a family emergency that she had to go. So that's why she stepped down. So she won't be here. And then I think the other piece, what I like to talk about is how we work, you know. And support you and elevate your guys' voice as much as possible. Um, and then the other piece, sadly, her local. Celebrity. With a two hundred thousand dollars scholarship to work is graduating.
Did you know? Uh, they offered me full tuition.
Oh, my gosh, that's amazing. Congratulations. That is incredible.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm doing a major biology.
That is wow, nice work.
Thank you.
So we need to talk to you about how we're. And what are some strategies that that, you know, we need some help from you? And talk about how we've done in the past and then the board's always been a big part in that. Sitting there, listening to the interviews, so how do I go forward with that? Cause we need to start that soon, um, because I'd like to get the new student rep on board. Before you actually graduates, just so we can do a little bit of onboarding. We have one select, only one this time, cause we have two G. So we can be selecting, it's open Q A soon as well.
Yeah.
Yes, Alia.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, um, that one time we went, uh, apparently it's true. But when I'm like, as for my information, it's like, we didn't even have contact on like, for like an upcoming Q I student, it didn't was like.
Oh, uh, Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, uh, and he never got back to me.
Well, we'll, we'll go back with him. So unless you don't want to kind of lead us the way, leave us.
Yeah, uh, just like for the recruitment of like another student.
Or we can just talk about the procedure first and tell it working there. Do you want to talk about some of the procedure?
Uh, yeah. Is that the? The second phase, right?
Yep. That's only the second.
But like the application. Process, like students will submit a. Student representative application to like the A and C advisor.
Well, you want to start with the purpose too a little bit on why we have two board reps and you know, get some work on that too.
Oh, yes. Well, the purpose of the student representatives is. To the Quincy School District is to serve as liaisons between like the board and students. But just like, um, clarifying any like, um. Maybe like misconceptions between like teachers and students, just like being a voice for both the students and the teachers. I think that's important. Cause a lot of students like maybe don't understand why teachers make decisions or like why school board makes decisions like. Makes those kinds of decisions. And so I think it's important for like us students reps to like maybe clarify things. And so there's no like miscommunication between students and teachers and any like administration. And then second, um, there will be up to three student representatives at all times. I think having an odd number is important and I feel like three. Like really gives you like that. Different perspective, cause if those even maybe like two people like have the same. Um, opinions, but like three, at least one of us will have like a different.
Something different, yeah.
Yes. And then the student representatives will provide insight and reports to enhance the board's understanding of student issues and representatives. So like, that's just our student reports. So like anything that's going on and it's not just like current events as school. It might be like stuff like, oh, the students disagree on this or the students aren't really happy with this. Um, what can we do to fix that and such? And then the student representatives will participate in more discussions, but will not have the right to make motions. So like, like earlier, when I jumped in, just like saying stuff like, oh, I'm really like appreciative of like remind. Cause like my dad really genuinely didn't know about that until like, you know, it was translated into Spanish. And just stuff like that, like giving feedback to like the adults in our life. Even if we can't, um, directly make decisions. And I kind of agree with that because, um, well, cause we're just eighteen, we're not like really well educated in that. Verse to like make decisions for students together. Like. Uh, I think we should provide feedback, but not like make direct decisions, so like an advisory vote. And then the student representatives will report to the students of Q S. Of the Quincy School District about both the work of the district and the board. So just going back to like the student council and like letting them know that this is going on, like. This is what we think, um, or like coming back here and like, oh, like reporting their thoughts as well. And the student representatives will represent Quincy School District students in accordance to the following, um. Qualifications, selection procedures and responsibilities. But like, uh, student representatives will be elected in the spring of the following school year. And it'll be for like one school year, beginning in September and concluding in June. And then in event of a vacancy during the school year, a student will be selected from a qualified applicant to serve the remaining term of the school year. And then all student representatives will serve a one-year term unless the school board decides to reappoint a student.
You know, that's not our current practice.
Yeah, that's what I was doing reading.
We've just, we've always rolled, we've always, that's sort of the idea of having a junior member is roll them in as a senior. We may want to make.
Some changes there.
A change of that.
Well, they say I'm still here.
You are still here. And we're glad.
And the board has always decided, I guess, the way I read that the board, yeah, that's. I didn't catch that either, but the board has, uh, always reappointed the student. We never had a student, oh, it's great.
And then qualifications for like an applicant, they must attend Quincy School District and be in grade eleven or twelve during their term. And then they have to attend, uh, Quincy High School for Q I. At least one period a day. And then each student representative must be in a proper academic standing, standing, so like just like their G P and stuff. And then the student representative must gather information regarding school events. That's where like our student reports, like what's going on at the high school and like just to report back to the state. And then the selected students will become non-voting members. Of the A S B, so we can like hop in like when Ms. Behan has like a meeting with like, um, the A S B.
Do you, do you do that regularly?
Uh, Kate, yeah, I stopped by during advisory and it's just like them like talking together in groups and like talking about like. Like planning prom events and stuff like that. I remember last year I hop in like a lot of their meetings, they call me like all of the. And then for the application process, students will submit the. Application to the A S B advisor, uh, students must submit at least two reference letters, one from a teacher or administrator. And then selected applicants will be removed by the Q S B superintendent or at least two board members and the parents to, uh, and board representatives. I think like during this, uh, we should be allowed to take the lead and like asking questions. I feel like that's less like nerve wracking for students. Cause like when you have the, like, oh, instead of having like the teacher administrator or like the superintendent. Um, interview you, it feels like more of a connection like with the student, cause it's like, I understand where you're coming from and. Hopefully it makes them less nervous and, um, more confident into like appointing to the post. And then for removal, the student representative serve at the discretion of the Quincy School Board. Uh, the board may remove the student representative for failure to fulfill his or her duties. Um, to maintain academic standards or for behaviors that are being, um, inappropriate.
So we wanted to talk about recruitment?
Yeah. Um.
What works last year, what, but it. Cause you worked pretty hard at that last year.
Yeah, uh, I think one of the things that worked pretty well was just like starting like around this time. And then just recruiting, like putting up posters or I thought of making like an advisory video. Just for like, um, saying, explaining like the position, like you know how people run for like K S V? Like for president, I thought of doing that, but like, cause not many people know about like the student representation. And so I think it needs to be more advertised and I think advisory would be a good place, cause everyone has advisors and it's only on Monday, so.
I was gonna say, when it comes to like the responsibility of the student representative, it's like, that's a pretty lengthy list. Were you aware of all of that when you started?
No, I wasn't.
And so the idea of starting a video of, of not only promoting it, but also educating them, what you're doing, kind of maybe getting even more in gritty detail. Those responsibilities would be good.
But I think a little was because we, we had this.
Yeah.
Um. It reworked and, and it was part of the recruitment process for them.
Yeah.
As I recall, so, so she didn't, but we did it by the next year.
Oh, I see.
We did it by last year.
And then, um, like the videos should be like pretty short, but like it'll summarize like most of the, so like the basics of what you do. And then like once, if they like applied or something, then, um, we'll go more into. Uh, more detail.
Do you need any support shooting that video? Do you want help from tech with that? Or I mean, I know you guys are pretty good with your tech. I feel, feel kind of weird that's not, uh, uh, you know, forty something year old guy asking me if you can help with that.
But we're.
Uh, I'll. I'll try and see, um, I would want you to be like in the video too as well. So, yeah.
It's the current ones. So like, like know who they're gonna be around with.
That would be a great idea.
Yeah.
You and you're on the lead.
Yeah, just in case like they don't know who to report back, it's like, you're gonna be calm.
Yeah.
There should be a familiar face on it, on the video.
And they have questions, you can like go look for one of us.
Yeah.
Just like say like, oh, I know this kid.
Yeah.
Come after you.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, um. Like once. Like we have enough applicants, we can start like conducting the interviews and stuff and then like it'll be student led, so like the three of us can like ask questions and. See like, and ultimately like the decision will be like up to you guys, but we can suggest like, oh, we like this candidate or this candidate seems like.
And why?
Yeah, and why?
Well, last year we talked about it, uh, everyone who was sending the interview talked about each candidate and it was actually our decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a lot of good applicants last year, you know.
So for this, you know, we have a flyer, I'll keep that. After this week, this is kind of a crazy week, but for maybe on Monday, I'll sometime to get the flyer out to the whole board so they. See it or I can make it for my weekly communication for the board to see how we promoted. Last year, the same feedback that you guys have. And then, um, you know, we have an online application for you guys. So I can get the poster to you, that is probably within. A week or two. And then if you would put up a post around, um. And then if you guys want help in the video, let us know, we can help you with that too.
Yeah, uh, I can start like working on the video or like scripting it or like trying to figure out what we want to like cover. Uh, cause I know last year, um, one of the ways that I remember Jayla had messaged me. Cause I, I had her on social media and I knew a lot of juniors that followed me and so I just like uploaded it and she asked me for the link. And then I guess it works, so.
It's a video that you guys could share with Q I students.
Yeah. Great idea. And then. Do you want me to go through the responsibilities or?
Or if any other thoughts, it was all on the recruiting process, so that's another game next steps.
The students are the experts here.
Right, students?
Yeah. Yeah, cause I, I, I really like going to Losa and learning all that, cause like. Cause a lot of students, like they, they all have different stuff that works for their schools. Cause a lot of the schools, they're, they're bigger and there's actually like more than one school. And so they have stuff that works for them specifically and that's why I like talking to them, then I get different ideas. And then I can like implement the ones that like work for our school instead. Yeah, or our district. Get back to your notes and see what we need to apply to last session.
Did you ever see yourself female schoolgirl?
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't mind. I'm, I'm really into community service. I mean, that's also why I wanted to hire things, but yeah.
You know, one of the things that we talked about when we redid this, um, years ago, I think, um. Is we did, we talked a lot about the advisory vote for students.
Yeah.
And it's actually in here that students will, would provide, well, it says they may provide the board with advisory vote votes. Um, it isn't something that. You've done.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm just curious what you both think about that. So, I mean, obviously there are some motions that are super simple or passing, adopting the agenda or just approving something. Um, that's really standard, but there are times when the topic is something that I think would have itself. Just student input. And I guess I'm wondering, um. I wouldn't want students to feel awkward and not say, hey, I'd like an advisory vote.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we identify those things early on. What, what's your recommendations on that?
Uh, I think with advisory votes, it, it can be somewhat through like our suggestions where we just hop in and like say something like. Oh, I agree or I disagree with this or like asking to explain one, but, um. Like, cause these won't count towards like the actual vote, which I agree with, cause like. Everyone is like well versed in like the topic and like sometimes we're not really like. Understanding it and so, um.
It actually against state law, cause you're not, uh, you're not elected.
Yeah, that's why.
But I think it, it could be very helpful to us when we're voting.
Yeah. We can definitely do that. Um, how did you feel about it?
I think it would like kind of work, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause like, don't think you like someone like, oh, I know this person is a good person, but I know this person's a good person. Then like the more like both the person you get and you select the resume, like. Like interview them, they're good enough, then it's like gonna help us out more.
Uh, we're talking about though, I think that's great too, uh, for the selection piece, but we're curious like in a board meeting, you know, the board votes.
Yeah.
You know, uh. Uh, reading with the turn to give and say, what is the student board, you know, how? Uh, you know, can I take advantage of quote from the student board reps? So you would say either yes or no on certain things.
Like in our general meetings, on our various discussions that we have and the, and various things, do you, do you want us to be specific in return in checking in with you guys? Or do you feel comfortable enough just piping in when you've had something to say?
Cause like with advisory votes, you can also choose to abstain and just like not say anything to. Like it's, it's like when they go on something and then they ask us, do we agree or disagree, but it'll just like help. I guess like kind of guide you guys into a decision.
And it doesn't have to be formal either. You can say, well, you know, my thoughts about this are, you know, just which is what we do too, it's worth. Debating until you have a formal vote.
Yes.
Then yeah, I think it would be good to talk to. I think with more, more comfortability.
Or so like open up the space for them to.
So they have to like awkward, like to shy.
Yeah. If, uh, or like. I like the idea of like having to like, or being able to like feel safe, like sometimes we don't really know.
Sure.
We can just be like, oh, I'll just slip same for now. But I like the idea of it, cause then I'll be like student space to. Um, like voice everything as well.
Would it be beneficial for Eliel and, you know, Annalee and whoever the new person be to go through whether, I don't wanna call it training. But some kind of a, hey, come down and let's talk about how a board meeting is run. So that they know when, like even for me, sometimes I'm like, oh, is this too many talk or not talk, you know? Um, and even if it means just pretending to go through an agenda and say, this is how this goes. And if you wanted to have input here or here's when we're going to ask for your input, so that, uh, just going into the new year, they know the flow of a full board meeting and they have that bit of training behind them. Uh, I don't know if that would be beneficial to you guys, uh. I know you've been around and so has Joanna Lee and, and you're in, and you've learned now kind of how the flow of a board meeting, but for even for a new person, I think maybe having that basis. And before throwing like, okay, go to a board meeting, here I go, you know? I don't know.
I think I, I brought up the idea of like having a handbook for students, you know, like. Or maybe like it'll be created by students and just like little advice, like I'm sorry.
Yeah, or, um, they're in the handbook. Yeah, there's a lost handbook on for, for student reps.
Yeah.
So maybe.
Yeah.
Not use this.
We've not.
We did a work session, right, and they were.
It was created by, by student reps, not by the grandma's.
We did a work session last, let's say August or. I think it was August. To kind of do a little onboarding, but we didn't do like, here's an agenda, this is what it looks like, this is where you would. No, we didn't do that. It was more so around the policy and procedure.
Bart should give them some training on how.
And, and, and that can happen outside of working too, so it's not as well.
That's what I mean, I'm saying, let's not do it in a working situation.
Or the senior rep can also train like the. Cause I think that, that help out a little bit and then like it's from a student, so like they'll feel more comfortable.
Yeah.
And like, um, maybe they can sit in with them, like during like their first board meeting and then the, the senior rep can just like tell them, oh, this is what we're gonna do next and just like guide you through like. And like print out the agenda for them. Just sounds like. It, it doesn't feel like they're lost on their own.
Yeah, those first couple meetings are a little intimidating and it'd be great just to give them some back. Background ideas of how it goes.
I, I remember they did mention the handbook, cause I remember it was one of the meetings and then, um. It was also brought up by the student reps like in a group chat. Like they sent a link to all of us, yeah.
Are there any things that we're not doing that we should or we are doing and we should stop?
Uh, I can't think of anything right away, but I, I. I'm not sure, I think I liked the, the current like policy and guideline, um. Yeah, I'm sure later on, like if. They have like some things to add, I'll go like. They'll like bring it up to you guys.
I think you guys are great.
Cause I like the layout of it, cause like I, I feel like I can voice my opinion and.
That's good.
And I, I know a lot of the other student reps were saying like, they don't really feel comfortable, well, not, not us, but I feel like in other schools. But, um, they, they didn't feel comfortable or they didn't feel confident enough to like speak out, cause like, I think they just didn't like. I think it was just cause like they didn't build a connection with like their, their board members.
Yeah, how do you feel like the connection was built the most?
Um, honestly, probably just joking around, like just.
Watch the conference.
Yeah, and just like communicating, like even if it's not stuff that's like board related, um, I feel like that builds a connection.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we'll start recruiting, but, uh. Yeah, so the video, I think you guys let them know that we're here to support you. I'll get you a flyer here really soon, okay?
Okay, thank you. And you know, you're the first, um, student rep who's a guy.
Yeah.
We, we have had all girls.
Yeah.
In the, in the past, and so, I mean, I think. But we haven't recruited very many boys. Well, I mean, I think in our recent years, it was a voice that was missing.
Yes.
Definitely it's missing. It's been really nice to have you for the past year, so. See what some, see if some of your friends are interested.
Yeah, I, cause I think I remember last year, they were like he, and I was like he, cause it was just girls and I was like pretty happy about it, cause like it brought me perspective.
You ready to move into? Are we ready to move into executive session?
Yes.
All right. So guys, you don't have to go home, but you can stay here. So we're gonna move into executive session, so if you guys wanna make sure your dinner store, you can. Is that something we did? The charred meeting up here and help.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris, I, I don't wanna forcefully kick you out if you're out there in cyberspace, but if you could drop off, that will avoid me from doing that. Chris Stark. My buddy out there, I know he's listening.
We're getting sacked.
You're like waiting for the number to drop down one.
Yeah, we'll give him a second, otherwise there's a way I can. There is a way I can do this.
You can eject. Thanks, you guys. See ya, have a good rest of the week.
Not as bad as it used to be. You used to remove somebody and then. Ever I'll have to join again in that same webinar, so. Not nearly.
Now I ask you.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Have a good one.
One more time. Get the replay one more time.
Perfect.